Uh, here we go. The order is six thirty-one. Looks like we have a full house today as far as board members are concerned. And let's get started then. Um, I guess the first thing is, Joe, I guess you got a report, please?
As usual, feel free to interrupt with questions or comments. Uh, first thing we looked at was a couple of outside user requests for water at Lancing Station Road and on Ridge Road right across from the high school. We sent those to the Water Sewer Advisory Board to give their opinion on them. They both look feasible, but, you know, I want the full look at it. We sent to the state a request to reduce the speed on Sharpstein Road.
Which one?
I don't remember. I can look it up if you really want.
Oh, okay. What's going on on Sharpstein Road, Joe?
They want to reduce the speed limit.
Races?
There's a resident that sent us a petition asking for a reduction of the speed limit on part of it and passed that on.
Oh, that's, yeah, I don't live on it, but that's perfectly a good idea because it's pretty densely populated there.
I'm always in favor of lowering speed limits.
What about thirty-four B?
If he passes a petition, I will send it onward. I don't think they'll allow go for it. Um, we went through a process of looking at Lavelleville in terms of no parking signage throughout it. There's been a real problem with people on really warm days parking up and down the roads, which make it virtually impossible for emergency vehicles to get through because the street's too narrow. So, working with the residents, we came up with a plan of where to put no parking signs and the town board approved that plan.
Where are you gonna have the people park? The fisher people and the swimmers and bikers?
Well, one of the things that the plan has is it tells people that there'll be a sign at Lavelleville Park that tells people to go park at the two fishing access points instead of up and down the road.
It's still gonna be tough like opening day, opening week there with all the fishermen in it. Those areas are still packed?
They're still packed, but, you know, if somebody has a fire, I want the fire truck to get there.
No, I understand. I've seen, I know that coming down that where the swimmers especially going down the hill, I said that it's clogged there in the summertime. Yeah, I thought you were saying that. But I wish there was some other, some other space to put the people.
I do too, but right now safety first and let's make sure.
Is there any room for the town to expand the parking lot at the park? That would help take care of the swimmers.
Only if you want to take out trees and signage and, you know, all the plaques that we put in that park.
All this paper. You know, it drops down, there's that, the ditch cuts that land in half, so to speak, you know, the runoff from the, and then below that is all overgrown. That, I think you could get in there and dump some, some of the cleanings from the ditch and fill that in and have a parking, additional parking down below.
We're looking at possibilities. I don't think we're gonna try to dig into the woods at the moment, but we're looking at possibilities.
Yeah, but that's, it's not really, I mean, it's just overgrown nasty stuff.
Yeah, I understand that, but we're looking, we're looking at the possibilities, but right now, we're making sure that folks can get to their houses and emergency vehicles can get to it.
Step number one.
Yeah.
It has to be done, yeah. Did you talk to the Rock and Gun Club about parking people over there?
No. Um, we approved hiring a part-time enforcement officer. Um, and we approved a contract with Lobella Associates to help us deal with the solar project between us and Groton. It's, it's, they're, Groton's hiring them as well. It's gonna be an interesting project as we learn how this whole process is working, being one of the first ones in. And CJ very generously volunteered to be the point person on that project.
So, what would Lobella do?
They're gonna analyze these reports that are gonna come to us with thirty days' notice to make comments, and we just don't have the staff in there, the knowledge to be able to do that. So, they'll do it and the solar facility will pay them for us. So, it's not costing the taxpayers any money, I hope. That's the way it's supposed to work. We will find out how it actually ends up working, but that's the plan, is there's a pot of money to pay for that, pay for our legal fees to deal with it, and give us input from professionals who have the time to just focus on this.
And that's to address the state?
That, yeah, it's us, this is our minuscule point of input, and we wanna have the biggest bang for the buck in terms of input, and so we're hiring people to really focus in on what are the issues, what can we comment on. They've been following the law more closely than we have, and I know CJ's been following it pretty closely. So, it's really in the town's interest to have somebody who knows what's going on, given that nobody's been through this before, and there's gonna be a really short window to make comments at all.
How many acres is the project, Joe?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Is it twelve hundred?
It's big.
Plus minus, yeah.
I mean, there's two ways to count the acreage, too, is the acreage is the actual fenced-off area, or the acreage is the area that this whole project is within, because it's, it's plot here, plot there, wires going back and forth. But about three-quarters of it is in Groton, only a quarter of it's in Lancing. But my understanding is they hook up the power lines in Lancing as well.
That's correct, yeah, interconnected.
Do we know how much of it is farmland and how much of it is forest that will be torn down?
Um, we have their first iteration. I'm not sure if that's what it's gonna end up being in the end. Looks like a lot of farmland, and they wanna dig their cables through a unique natural area. That's, that's, that's what they've presented so far.
Poor use for some of the best farmland in the state. What happens to the other end of social equity?
Well, you know, what's more important to you, having lights or eating?
Well, how about, how about twelve thousand acres of land can't be used for anything else in Salve?
Yeah, I'm with you there, Larry. And, you know, you and I agree on stuff all the time.
Then why don't we have any power to do anything? You got power, Joe. Come on, get on the stick.
Not on this one.
Slowly on those ninety mile an hour cars, you can do it.
I drive slowly down a road that slows them down a little bit.
Blockers. Rover bear me.
For thirty seconds. Any other questions? That's the end of the points that I was covering.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see, we, I guess, in the back, do you, do you have any comments on anything at all? No? Okay. All right, let's move on to Village Solars, guys. So, I guess you got a multi-page report from the engineer. Did you get a chance to talk with Donnie at all on this?
I did, yeah.
Um, is some of these items okay, not okay, what's?
Most of them relate to stormwater, and quite a few of them are just minutia details. But he said there were two concerns he had overall that majored him. One was the, the high-pressure water line running through the side, just towards the back of that, and then the letter.
Okay.
He wanted to be sure that they're hooking up the buildings to the high-pressure line, not the sixteen-inch low-pressure line that was. And going back to your things with Larry Fabroni, the high-pressure line was installed in our project area back in two thousand and fourteen. And it's, they're available right now, the easements for that were also shown on this as well, man, by hand, which I can give to CJ. But also, it looks like we can make our service connections from that existing main, the two-inch main, as has been done throughout the rest of the project. So, and it's in the location, you look in the very last page, that main is shown, bold, and that's pretty much where it is. I got the actual one on the spot, but it's a little more accurate. So, that's one thing. The other thing was a major concern, as Garcia was concerned, was the, the way that on the north end of the property, there was, somebody did a diversion, apparently it was done during construction where it was supposed to drain out to design Point One and build the Warren Road, but they diverted it back to the north, and some of the water coming off the property was not going there. We think it was done during construction, or maybe done by the neighbor, we're not sure, but that's an easy fix to just put that back. On the south end, we have practices that are going off-site, some of them, discharges, but others that are trying to get to Warren Road. And it looks like the slope of that was supposed to go north, I think, in discussions with the Vicennies, they tried to do that physically, construct it, but it went to the north where it was supposed to go and then off the property. But because they put a fiber optic cable up there, they couldn't get the ditch deep enough to make it. So, we either have to maybe retool that ditch and put a pipe down underneath it so the fiber optic is protected, or do something of the sort. Right now, we'll be, we just got this letter on Friday, so we haven't done it yet, but it is a solvable problem. So, we're, we should have something for you, but it's not, not a major problem, we just have to fix it. All the other items, if there's some, probably eighteen to twenty other items, or things like elevation differences, or pipe drainage, confirming the soil conditions, and things up there, which is, is all been done. We just have to make a formal reply to this letter. So, while it's long, it's not totally a big deal, but it has the difference.
CJ, we spoke briefly, you had a couple items that you had concerns with, what happened?
Yep, Tim is echoing those comments that were prepared by TG Miller in Saint Don Friday. The other question that I had, and this certainly predates me here, but the town board back in two thousand and fifteen, February eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, did pass a resolution requiring that the buildings have separate metering, and that's my understanding that the Bolton Point has that policy as well. So, the concern relative to the site plan that's submitted would be that I'm seeing at least two of the buildings on the same parcel, so I'm just not sure how applicant would like to address that.
We plan to quit years, let each service, each building have a separate service.
And we actually have currently, our phase one is three buildings on one parcel, and our second phase is also on one parcel. And we do have a separate metering, and actually, when you brought this up right before the meeting, I've emailed you the current quarterly statements that we have that go through each individual building. So, you know, we have the history going back, there's the beginning of all buildings, or gallons per day that were being built for, that sort of thing, and I bet it won't be a problem at all.
So, just been talking to Bolton Point this afternoon, I talked with Jeff Hall, the distribution manager there, and he confirmed that one building, or, I'm sorry, one meter per parcel is the understanding. So, um, so you're saying that you're planning on having multiple buildings served by the same meter pit? Is that correct?
Well, in the past, they've allowed us to do multiple buildings on the same parcel that have separate metering. If, you know, we needed to subdivide and where to get separate metering, or to comply with other town lines, we could certainly do that, and that wouldn't be...
I mean, I could be reading this incorrectly. I made sure I printed it out for all of you, just to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding. So, I guess, I don't know how this came to be, but in two thousand and fifteen, there was a town board resolution calling for a separate metering for each building, so figured this was a good opportunity to address that, however you wished to address that. But, and I figured also, given the town engineers' comments, that you probably would be submitting like a, you know, utilities plan that showed water and sewer and some of the items that they're looking for, for the review, and perhaps could address this at the same time. So, just figured I'd mention it and...
So, I got confused. So, Bolton Point says they want a one meter per tax parcel.
That's correct.
But this resolution says that we want a meter for every building, so there may be more built, three buildings on one tax parcel. So, how are we gonna resolve that? Which, which way do we go with it? Does Bolton Point have priority over this resolution, one per building?
In the past, we've done more than one meter on a parcel. If necessary, we could put in a master meter in a bit someplace.
Okay.
And then put separate sub-meters.
Oh, okay.
But that's expensive and time consuming, but if we gotta do it, we can do it.
I have to imagine that in two thousand and fifteen, there was some rational basis for why the town board adopted this. I mean, I'm happy to go back and talk with town council, just to verify this is the case, but in talking with Bolton Point this afternoon, and of course, they're looking forward to coordinating with the applicant as well, they did confirm that, generally speaking, they want a meter for each tax parcel, I think, just to make, probably their record-keeping.
Good. You have...
I'm just, it makes sense to have one on each parcel if you wanna subdivide if somebody comes in and the bank wants something.
Sure, it makes sense, yeah.
I have no idea how it works out. Common sense ain't so common a lot of the time, so...
Well, it came down to us, you know, there's nothing in terms of financing that would harm that, so, especially because we could have all the cost easements and guarantee access to the stormwater, not the features that would be necessary for both buildings. That would be the main thing that we're worried about, would be that, you know, any community features are included, and that's already something that we deal with them on, because our community center features and our trail features are all, you know, very important to our pitch to the banks, so that's already inherent.
So, how are we gonna balance, how are we gonna get this meter thing part of this final approval process?
Sure, I'm guessing, I'm anticipating that applicants would provide a utilities plan that showed, well, I'm guessing the first phone call after this will be, you know, to town engineers, but also Bolton Point to just coordinate with them and verify that this is the approach that they prefer. I think I just probably assumed that you guys were, are coordinating with them on this until I saw these comments, so maybe we're happy to help facilitate those conversations.
Sometimes in projects, guys, you have a master meter that just enters the property, and then you have your own meter for each building, so you can test and see what's on the master meter versus what's going, what you're selling internally, and that way you can develop, if you find out you got leaks or you got problems someplace, it's a nice check and balance. So, it's not the end of the world if you have to do that.
Is there any?
This may not have any bearing, or maybe just a silly question, but we, do we know why the town board wants a meter in each building when Bolton Point's requirement? And this isn't the first rodeo that the town and Bolton Point have had. Do we know why they want one in each building when they know that Bolton Point's requirement is one per parcel?
I speculate a little bit as to it, nobody on the board has anything. I mean, I don't know for certain, but I know that one issue has been sewer capacity, and we're currently at two hundred gallons per day, is what they measure us at. Our numbers show that we're closer to actually under seventy gallons per day, and I actually sent all those numbers to CJ, so the town now has those. And, you know, we've been sort of pushing them to lower us down to a hundred gallons, and, you know, because we'd still be at the ninety percent capacity that they want to give the ten percent room, and we'd actually even be on that because our units, like I said, were probably in the area of sixty-three to sixty-eight gallons per day on average, so, per day, per unit, I should say. So, you know, I think that maybe it was just that they wanted to get that those numbers so that they had our data on that. That's my guess, but, you know, again, I'm on the other side of the table, so I can't say for sure.
That'd be, that'd be my guess, too, and I think that Bolton Point just probably doesn't wanna do more than one tap per parcel. So, that's, that's the conflict.
Do you feel like by tax parcel, do you have a resumé?
So, Bolton Point says it's, it's not okay to put a meter on every building, then this is in conflict with water ministry.
If there's more than one building on the parcel.
Right, right.
So, a lot of your parcels, there's only one building, right?
Right, that's true. Though, our first several phases, they're all multiple buildings. Bolton did not, I don't think did that, this is a new, this is a new issue right now.
All right, so what are you typically doing? Typically having the tap come, you know, curb bots and then right in, or are you normally doing meter pits?
Every other building to maintain an outward character.
But if you got, you got three coming off the wall...
They have one building that's exactly, and that's...
We all do these way they build us, they itemize it by unit, but, so, you know, we can always take the units and divide them by building and do the math that way, so it's not necessarily such a difficult problem perspective.
So, the board members, you, there's no concern in one way or the other at all, right?
As long as they comply and put a meter in every building. Doesn't matter to me.
So, CJ, at this point in time, it's really waiting for you, maybe represented for the town, Bolton Point, and the developers to get together to work this concern out, right?
Yeah, I anticipated that they'd probably be coordinating already with Bolton Point on this project, just because, you know, obviously this is bringing a number of units online. So, yeah, I'm happy to help set up a call to do that, but yeah, Bolton Point would need to provide, you know, the, you know, a statement essentially that they're comfortable with that.
Okay, so where are we, where are we next on this?
Uh, I'm not sure. Applicants might have additional information.
Well, you know, we're happy to, those items that Don Harner pointed out, we're happy to tie those to our COO. We've done that in past phases, we've been very successful with that, tie any concerns that they have to the specific occupancy, you know, like Tim said, these are all very easily solvable issues, we're very committed to solving them, and certainly by tying it to a building that we're gonna be committed for a loan on, and, you know, by the time it gets to CO, it'll be completed and finished, you know, we would have every reason to go through with it, and, you know, certainly we would anyway, because what Don's pointed out here is not burdensome.
So, all of this will be taken care of before you receive any COs?
Yes, that is right. That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
Even before that?
Yeah, we think we can get this resolved, you know, well before that. I can't say exactly, but well before that.
Yeah, they'd need, so they need Bolton Point authorization, as well as a town of Lancing sewer permit, which is contingent on Village of Cuba Heights' approval from wastewater treatment plans.
Those are all orders we already have to do.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm gonna tell you this, Scott Russell, I've already talked to him, he wants you guys to approve us before he gives us any permits, so...
Of course, I mean, that's great.
There was one order, you brought up last, last meter, did you get in, did you get those, um, photos and notes about the numbering system? Did that get to you?
About the numbering...
On the buildings?
On the buildings.
Oh, this, I don't believe it, but what was that?
So, several weeks ago, I drove by and there were some emergency vehicles there, one of which had passed me on Warren Road. By the time I was approaching Village Solars, I could see they were there with their lights on at the north end, right? One of the vehicles left the north, went into the south road, access road there, and as I drove by, I thought, what's going on? Are they trying to find a building and they can't find it? So, later that week, I drove in, drove around, looked at the different buildings. Most of the older buildings especially have, you know, three-inch numbers, letters that are right over the entry door, you can see them from about five or six feet away.
The older buildings, exactly.
Yeah, exactly, the older buildings. When I drove by today, I noticed two of the buildings seemed like they had larger numbers that were dark, so good contrast, because they're up on the, and they were up high enough. So, I think that, kind of two concerns. One is that visitors to the complex of many, many buildings are able to find the building that they're looking for, but more importantly, that emergency services are able to find the building they're looking for quickly. So, rather than right above the doorway, just over kind of where the cars are, up at about six foot eight or whatever, that we have these large numbers higher up on the building that are high contrast and easy to see and easier to read from, not in, not actually in the parking lot, but out at the adjacent street for all of the buildings, I don't know as something that's reflective is really necessary, because if you've got headlights at night, you would potentially be able to see the contrast or emergency lights or whatever. The other thing that came to mind would be potentially some kind of a kiosk, which could be as simple as a pole and, you know, something that's not gonna, that's weatherproof that would have a map, that somebody could pull up to at either one of the access roads.
Actually, I just finished up, we have a map now, that finished up with our phase six, so that's been for less than a year, but it is now, I think.
Is that something that somebody can pull up to on the road?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah, that's, now...
And is there some kind of way that they would recognize as they pull down the road that, hey, here's a map for the facility?
You know, probably not from the road. I think that calling up the emergency services people and pointing it out to them is a important thing, and I would definitely be doing that, and also be putting in a work order to increase the size of the signage on the old buildings, and maybe see about getting some of those little green tags that you put on the road that have the number that familiar them a bit.
That's all I'm after, is people be able to find the building they're looking for easily, but especially emergency services.
Yeah, it's very, very certain, especially given that, you know, it was only in the last decade that those addresses switched from being Warren Road, street addresses to being Village Circle, street addresses, so, you know, there is still some confusion that even gets into our process sometimes, because there's different numbers for buildings, so I definitely take your point, so it will be different.
Yeah, that, and I know that the buildings also have multiple entrances, different doors, and so I didn't really look at that closely, but really wanna make sure, again, that when somebody approaches the building, it's very easy for them to find out, you know, this is unit one A or whatever, or where they should be entering.
Absolutely, and I think that, now that you brought this up, we find that, we fire any EMS and the police, and I'll give them a floor plan for our buildings, I think that probably the best way to do it, just so that they have a good, I mean, you know, we have good signage on the outside of the buildings in terms of very clear, this is unit A, this is gonna be a C P, but you don't know the layout of the buildings, you might not necessarily know that, you know, there's eight per floor, and that each garage on the second floor, et cetera. So, no, I definitely take your point on that, and I think that sending EMS, sending fire, sending the sheriffs are floor plans, and knowing all sorts of them, seeing what their questions are, will really help increase the level of safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so to, to, to repeat, you're gonna try and put some larger numbers and replace the smaller numbers on the existing buildings?
Oh, we'll be doing it, I can fire and do it.
Okay, and then you're also gonna try and put some numbering system somewhere along the parking lot or the roadways to, as a guidance as well, is that correct?
Yeah, so we'll do that, so...
Anything else, Dean, or?
No, this stresses my concerns, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I guess where are we at right now?
So, Stormwater Management Officer, Chris Planner, John Zepko is out. He's on, taking vacation this week, so he can hang out with me. I would like him to take a look at the comments from town engineers and go through them, especially the comments that Tim just articulated, so the comment seventeen in particular, just because of the question about that additional, let's see, this column here. Yeah, for that third design point, and I only just stress this because of a recent conversation with Village of Cuba Heights and Village of Lancing relative to wastewater treatment and the amount of I and I and stormwater concerns that they have, and I just wanna make sure that those are buttoned up to their satisfaction, which, you know, have a tangential relationship with this, but I very much like John and Donnie to have a conversation, they're actually both out on vacation this week. Donnie, I asked to attend, but you could not. And then we'd also like to see all of the water sewer, we'd like to see that on a utility plan as well, and just make it really easy to coordinate with Bolton Point, and we need to get just our head around, I hadn't recalled that two thousand and fifteen resolution from the town board until I started looking at some of the comments from Donnie, so I think a utility plan that illustrates this will certainly help address the rest of these comments, so...
So, before we can do the final, we would like to, Scott to review this.
John.
John, I mean, John to review this, and Scott, you said Scott has some review as well?
Uh, it would more really be Bolton Point and the applicants, I'd like them to just get together and just do...
So, is that really what's left as far as whole, you know?
As far as I can see.
Once the engineer, you get together with the engineer, you get together with stormwater, then it's really just a matter of us saying, okay, everything is good with the professionals, and then we, I guess we can go with it, is that correct?
So, CJ, you saying you're looking for an overhaul for the entire development utility plan for water and sewer?
I think, I think if only because that would help illustrate the comments, of course, you know, I defer to the P E, as if there, there's a better solution for illustrating those comments, but just thinking of the water and sewer coordination... those comments, but just thinking of the water and sewer coordination and the comments from Donnie, I think that would certainly help.
Tim, you know they submitted as built as each units?
Yes, they have.
They've got their COs?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't see any reason why potentially we could do this because of condition of permit, because in the past we've come saying, here's the list of things that we have done, and then basically as soon as the engineer and Bolton Point were satisfied, we were okay to go. And that would help us. We're trying to keep the people employed and on site and keep things rolling and just, we're not going to lose it. We don't get some.
Yeah, I know, but we're also at the mercy of stormwater and utilities and everything else as well.
Yeah, there's just some significant coordination here. Just trying to be mindful, of course, of Bolton Point and Village of Cuba Heights concerns, so. But I think it's, I mean, certainly all.
I think it's probably about point, I think they're fine with what we're doing. It's just a question of meters. They have a water capacity, and we've already talked to Village of Swords.
Yes, yeah, the village has already given the, told me that they're going to give us at least ninety of our hundred thirty eight permits to start out, and then the last forty eight, we're not sure about, but frankly, if we don't get them, then we wouldn't be building them. But, you know, certainly, like Tim said, we are passionate to all of these as a condition of our CO. You know, if we can do that or keep our process going, because our, you know, our financing is hitting a wall with timing and our crew is running out of work. So, you know, we are, like you said, pacing away, anything that we can do to get this through tonight, you know, seeing it doesn't seem like there are material issues with it, you know, it would certainly be good, that's what it helps keep things going.
So what if we kind of, could we do this at our working meeting in two weeks? Is the folks doing it tonight? Is that what CJ?
So the next meeting of the planning board is Monday, September 12. We are intended to do training, but if you prefer, certainly we can work with applicants.
What do you think on that?
How long is John out for vacation?
Two, just a week.
What's that, one week?
Just a week, yeah, this week. And Donnie too, so they would be able to, would guess reconvene when they got back on the swing.
Did you talk to Donnie?
Uh, yeah, we spoke just briefly on Friday, yeah. And right before you asked for water, and it was already on its way to Rockville.
Well, I'm kind of following CJ's advice on holding off until that, but maybe at the best we could do it before the training. Is that possible? If everything's in place, we could just issue the approval, yeah?
Yeah, I think we would need to, I mean, we could certainly consider it. We would really need everything in place by, be looking at Tuesday, the sixth. I mean, that, everything would have to go to print, and so I'd have to backdate this a little bit, and I do want to talk to John, so I don't want to commit to that, but let's work with the applicants and do our best to, if not the 12th, then the 26th, at the latest, I think, as long as these comments are addressed. You know, I have to take the town engineer's comments seriously.
Larry?
I'm a little concerned, we got the town engineer's comments on Friday, right?
Correct.
How long did he have the information from the applicant?
That's a good question. I'm not sure when the application was considered complete.
It was considered complete before the last meeting, and we were promised, because we missed the last meeting, that we would have it ten days after your last.
And Larry, you're frankly bringing up a point of frustration, and we do appreciate that this was supposed to be taken care of long ago by Mr. Harner, and we just got it on Friday?
Everybody's busy, but it just really helps us keep our time. It's not like this project is brand new and virgin ground. This is the last day of a very successful project, and we're not hoping for a little bit here if we could.
So couldn't you do something like, if all those conditions are met, then that, and if they're not met, then you can't move forward?
Well, I'm following CJ's advice about holding off until the stormwater and engineers.
Well, I'm just, you know, Tim did articulate those two significant points from Donnie, one of which was the third design points for the subcatchment related to the stormwater. That's a significant issue, and, you know, I'm, you know, I get the concern about the project schedule, but we also have obligations, of course, to our municipal partners to make sure that we're, you know, properly accounting for stormwater and such, especially in this area. I just want to really emphasize that, especially because of issues to the point south, including the airport, so we're trying to be essentially mindful of all the water that Village of Cuba Heights will have to treat as part of this. And then the questions, there are some, I think, significant questions after my phone call with Bolton Point this afternoon about the water connection. So just want to make sure that that is buttoned up tight to the engineer's satisfaction before proceeding.
On a stormwater, Donnie suggested maybe a third design point. It would be our preference to go back to the original second design point and make sure that worked and that ends up with a deal. Like I said, there's a lot of options to do it, and we're saying that if Donnie can't deal with what we do as a fix, then we hope to get the permit.
Yeah, I mean.
All those conditions would have to be satisfied.
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of, we're at the, pretty much just kind of rubber. We have to wait for stormwater and engineering to say, it's a go, and then this board will just say, yeah, go ahead, I would think, right, folks? What do you, go ahead.
I have no idea, but I don't, applies to towns, but there are laws that if everybody's unanimous, we could do an email vote, but I don't know if that's legal in town or not.
Not a temporary decision, not like that, yes, we got it public for. Almost like a meeting.
Yeah, so I'm anticipating at the next meeting, you'd make a negative declaration of environmental significance, I'm assuming at least that much, and then for the final site plan approval for this particular phase, but.
You already did that with the negative, didn't you, last?
Oh, you may, perhaps you already did a negative declaration. You're just waiting on this.
Thirty minutes.
Are we run over the part two?
We're on part two.
Yes, okay.
That's done.
But I don't think everybody can detect it, or we do.
I don't think so yet. I think they're tied into the proposed final resolution. So, yeah, so we'll coordinate with applicant.
We can get that now? Do that now?
Sure.
Well, I was just going to, they're generally speaking, trying to beak them together into the same resolution, so if you want to consider that, I don't have anything prepared for you to consider, negative declarations, so.
Somebody mentioned a special meeting if we have to do it. I mean, it seems to me somebody's been sitting in the backseat instead of getting the work done.
I agree.
Not that bad to come in.
Well, I don't have a problem. Does anyone here have a problem attending a special meeting to try and get this thing through, to help them out? Are all you folks are okay with that? We have to.
CJ? Just has to meet the reporting requirements to be a valid meeting.
Sure, you've got, you've got Labor Day holiday coming up, so I don't know the extent to which they can coordinate with Bolton Point ahead of time, around this time, but, you know, once I've, once Donnie and John are back, I don't see why they can't coordinate on that.
We have to be very, very careful.
We have a history of conditional approvals.
Say that's a good idea? What's that?
Then all of a sudden, when I.
No, no, it doesn't.
Same wave stuff.
All right, so why don't, why, my, I guess, seems like the best, you know, trying to work both, you know, we got both sides here, is, is you're going to try and get the stormwater and engineering as quickly as possible, the coordination, if everything is in place, we'll try to do a special meeting and just approve that so you can get your building permit, is that correct, where we're at?
Yeah, they, well, building permits would follow their Bolton Point permits as well as town sewer permits and Village of Cuba Heights connections.
So you still have to get all those?
Yeah, they're.
We can't get those until the actual approval. So that's why we're kind of trying to get this done, so we just need our, but those include.
All right, so let's leave it that way, folks. You guys okay? Everyone okay with that then? So we'll do our best to get you coordinated with engineering and stormwater, and as soon as all that's in place, we'll just have a quick meeting some evening and approve the resolution and go from there, I guess.
Is it a five-day notice we can hand out? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Somehow CJ, we need something from T G Miller saying that each and every one of these items has been addressed and is satisfactory.
Well, to kind of all of these ends, I think we were just trying to highlight those two major points that T G Miller had made, and the rest, of course, can be dealt with as part of the stormwater, the SWIP, for instance, and then also the stormwater agreement for the site. So I don't think they necessarily have to solve every single issue on this four pages of comments to be able to advance the project, but just those two major ones work, just because they would have site design implications, that's all.
And that's what Donnie said to me.
Yeah, exactly.
Basically, all these things are a little bit, or as a head of the higher law, can be cleaned up on the final version of things, so, but two main ones, he wants to go straight on.
So we going to communicate with Donnie even though he's on vacation so that he has an idea that this is now risen to the top?
When, when Donnie and John get back, I am happy to reach out to them and coordinate with them.
And then maybe we could discuss it another meeting as far as the timeframe with engineering? I mean, is this a delay?
Uh, yeah, why don't we have a conversation about this at the training?
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to do, no, I said at a future date, we need to, we need to talk about this. I think it's happened in the past before, isn't it? So, okay. How long is the training going to take?
I mean, just to be clear, the town engineers are rating comments for the benefit of the town, so.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, just making sure. Go ahead.
How, how long is this training session?
Uh, it kind of depends. I mean, we were thinking about doing, you know, some of the land use training and then some of the heated meetings and conflicts training as well. Really depends on the scope of what you'd like to hear more about, but they have kind of an initial draft of an agenda for training. So conflicts of interest, expert in communication, which I know you guys really probably want to hear more from me about, but land use, case law, things like that, have Guy come, myself.
Okay. We're going to try to do this maybe before that.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to try, you know, if you guys can all get coordinated, you've got that timeframe, then we'll just call a special meeting, you have the resolution prepared, and we can just go from there, correct? If everything works out?
Right, correct. I mean, if the, the main conditions that engineering is concerned about are satisfied, then that's great, yeah.
Yes, and other agencies.
I'm sorry?
And other agencies, both want Cuba Heights and the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
I always appreciate you, Larry, this is a special meeting, it really, you know, obviously we had a bit of delay with engineering here, and it depends who lays on our engine, so it's not like we've been perfect either, so thank you for your flexibility, and we will definitely be getting this side. We hope they had it for the, when they all get back on Monday.
Okay, I hope so, so you guys get together and then we'll see how it works out, let's see, guess what we can offer you this time. Thanks, guys, well, thank you for some questions. Okay, thank you.
Don't forget about CJ, we got to do that.
Absolutely.
All right, guys, I was talking to CJ earlier today on one of the things, I was, I'm going to ask her to highlight to the board the traffic study that came up with Dandy Mark, so I'll leave CJ go from there. There was some concerns from both the public and board members about the scope of the traffic study, so CJ, if you have a few minutes, please?
Yeah, absolutely, of course. So I believe that you as lead agency did requests from the applicant for Dandy Minimark, uh, traffic impact study, right?
Third party, we would decide the engineer.
Okay, so the town has retained in the past S R F associates as part of transportation studies we've done, so one of the comments coming out of the, I guess, the subsequent consideration of the sale of town center lands, so you know, everything kind of around Milton Meadows, right? So you guys remember that, there's like a hundred and something acres remaining, right? So the question is, you know, does the town want to sell it? Does the town want to do something else there? And so Dave Herrick is part of that, recommended, I think to Mike Long, maybe back in March of 2019, to do two things at the site, right? The first one was a stormwater study of the whole area to kind of get, get the sense of, you know, what you could do to develop over there and what lands you'd really need to, you know, set aside as part of that. And then the second piece of it was a transportation study to see essentially, you know, what kind of trip generation and changes to different intersections kind of along, I would say sort of along the corridor, but they're mainly focused on the town center lands, like if you were to sell it and fully develop it, you know, based on some basic density calculations of what a build out would look over there, this is the report that came out of it. So David Cruzy and the bunch at S R F came out in 2019 in association with that and did some counts, and, you know, you guys have seen the report, so you see what their recommendations are. So in any event, they're the go-to transportation firm as recommended by T G Miller, and so I certainly would recommend them, again, here. They already have the data that they collected on behalf of the town independently of this project, and so, yeah.
You said Dave was okay with using that study for this traffic?
Yes, and so just to back up a bit, I know that there was a scope specified by this, the planning board as well of things that you want included in the traffic impact study, but DOT had, also had items they wanted considered as well, and they confirmed that the 2019 data was fresh enough for their purposes, so.
So all that would, all the new data that would need to be collected would be the data around that specific intersection? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but let me take a look and make sure I'm not totally wrong. But yes, as for the data and the scope of the traffic impact study, that was verified by town engineers as well as DOT, so that was the scope of the project. Now, if the planning board is suggesting you prefer a different firm, you certainly can look into it. Go ahead.
But any report that's prepared is going to be done by a professional, and will be reviewed by you and John, also professionals, as well as the town's engineers.
Of course.
For appropriateness, reliability, accuracy, so it'll all be reviewed, no matter who does the report, correct?
That's correct, and in addition, you know, know that, and I think I might have sent you the link, but DOT basically has kind of a recommended template that they encourage people to use as part of that, but Deb was going to ask something.
Well? Mark, well, we got two.
Go ahead.
Deb, go ahead.
It seems to me for traffic study, I've been looking a lot of these Dandy Mark locations. This is the first one with the drive-through, and considering what people were saying about what happens up at Rabato and the congestion that develops at key times, I think we need an engineering firm that has some expertise in drive-through and also when you've got trucks coming in, cars coming in, and who's going which way, and people who shop.
Yeah, but those firms will take that all into consideration. They'll take, you know, they'll take into consideration the time of year, whether it's winter time, the snow.
But I mean, also internally.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that was my biggest concern, was the ingress and egress going onto the road, not necessarily, is it going to increase more traffic on that, at that intersection? It's the safety coming in and out is what my personal concern was, so.
Also the internal safety.
Yes, the circulation on the site.
Yeah, that's the report.
Yeah, and one of the, one point that Deb and I talked about briefly last time, too, was in terms of sidewalks, I believe the engineer was saying, well, yeah, we'll be striping. Well, having a paved area with the stripe on it does not keep a car from running somebody over a curb and a different height level does, so when we start looking at whatever their next iteration is that shows sidewalks and what have you, I'm, personally, I'm not looking for, you know, paint stripes on the pavement to say that's a sidewalk.
I think they were, I think John was talking about sidewalk like you would see in any urban setting, or suburban setting where you have a sidewalk that's parallel with the road. Larry?
I'm not a psychologist, but I'm old and I'm going to address the elephant in the room. What we have to remember, what we have to deal with, is I read the letters, particularly the ones requesting or demanding, however you want to say it, an independent traffic study. My concern is, it's our intention to choose the engineer and then the developer. My concern is, it's our intention to choose the engineer, and then the developer will pay for the traffic study. The feeling I get from reading the comments is, they feel that if the developer pays for this traffic study, the engineer is going to color his, his results. You know, I, well, you shook your head, I know what you're talking about.
You're a professional, you do, you wouldn't, somebody wouldn't hire you and you wouldn't give a slanted report, you're a professional.
That's correct.
We're not gonna risk losing their license or their reputation.
No, I, I agree with you, but the problem is, the people that are raising these questions are not going to agree with you.
And that's why we're gonna have a review by the planning department as well as the town engineer?
Don't disagree, but the, there's, the tenor of these letters, based on my limited experience dealing with the public in this type of manner, has led me to believe that a certain mindset is already in place, and they're gonna question anything that isn't paid for by the town. I want us to be prepared for that.
Right, but, but now CJ, we are, you are going to be contracting with the firm for this study.
Yeah, I just want to be very clear that when applicant is required or requested to, to reimburse the town for those costs, that's pretty normal, right? So, again, like Morabito is an example, there was recently, we had to have a special, because T.G. Miller, again, is, they're site civil, and they, they don't have a specialty within transportation, right? And they don't have a specialty within fire, they recommend firms for us to engage with as third party, and I, you know, I, Dave Herrick is.
Yeah, I know that, this isn't, this isn't my first rodeo, I know all that, but the problem is, how are we gonna let these people know that and get them to the point where they trust that?
Larry, I think they were reacting to a comment one, one of the applicants made of, oh yeah, we know this engineering firm, we've worked with them, indicating that it's their engineering firm, so I.
I agree with you, that's why I raised the question that I did. We've got to be very careful to make sure that the public knows what we know.
Right, so CJ, you have contracted with a firm, or you have contact, you've, you've talked with a firm, and you've let the developer know that you would like to use this firm, is that correct?
Yes, we've engaged the firm to begin work on behalf of you all as lead agency.
No, I understand all that, I've, we've done this before.
Right.
But I'm pointing out the fact that we're dealing with emotions here, and people aren't going to be willing to accept certain things, so we have to be ready to answer that.
Right, I agree with you, and we, we've more or less, I think, satisfied that concern about there might be bias by the planning, the town's planning department hiring or contacting the firm and the developer saying, okay, we can use this firm.
Particularly should be known the fact that we have used this firm in the past.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I don't mean to speak for applicant, but my guess is they were probably, you know, stoked to hear that we have an ongoing relationship with SRF, where they had already had some of the data already, I mean, it's kind of unusual to already have pretty fresh data from a transportation consulting firm relative to a nearby project, that's pretty unusual, so it's kind of a, you know, the whole's greater than some of its parts, you know.
So, to, to reiterate, I think, what the board members are saying, I think, that traffic study should include comments about ingress and egress onto the both roads, should talk about circulation on the lot, as well as potential backup onto west side of 34B with the, the drive-through possibly.
Okay, just to be clear, they're.
Dean had a very clear list of things that, that covered that, including bicycle access and things like that, and it was all very clear.
Okay, Al, go ahead.
Joe, go first.
I just wanted to say, if you, if you say that we're contracting this for the developer, it sounds like the developer's in charge, but really, the town is contracting with this engineering firm, the town pays this engineering firm, the town has been reimbursed with the money, the financial connection is with the town, not with the developer, they just happen to be giving the town a reimbursement, so, as you talk about it, if you talk about it in terms of the town's hiring this engineer, the town's paying for this engineer, the town's being reimbursed for this expense, so it's not a burden on the taxpayers, I think that message is what they're just trying to get through, is the way you refer to it.
Exactly, because what we've got is a situation here where any answer we give is gonna be questioned by the, by the people that were concerned. We have to let them know this, we have to let them know that this is the way that it's normally done, and we want to be prepared for the fact that there's, there are always gonna be a certain number of them that aren't gonna believe us, we're never gonna please everybody.
You're right, you're right, we're doing the best we can, Lynn, you got it?
I, I don't know if we address this now, but I, I, you know, hearing about a 10-foot swath where bikes going both directions and a highway, a pedestrian walkway in the middle, and I think I threw it into an email, and I don't think the main show to connect the schools and the town land and everything is realistic going through the center of downtown, near, kind of a joke, but downtown Lansing, it's gonna be going around, but there should be a safer move for a person to get off a bike and walk it on a sidewalk, and pets to be able to have a place, 'cause, you know, the, the commuting bicyclist is a pro, or crazy, one or the other, but, I mean, the, the, you know, the concept of this is a family outing and little Johnny makes one friggin' mistake, and it's not a good thing, so, I really think that there has to be, you know, there's two sides of it, but I, you know, having it as the main thoroughfare is not.
Back, back to your comment, personally, I think sidewalks should be for pedestrians, they shouldn't be shared with bikes.
Unless a bike is walking.
You, you walk the Black Diamond Trail, you know how dangerous that is, right? When you have bikers and walk.
Bikers, too.
Yeah, but you have to, you have to shout out coming through because they can't hear you, they're liable to walk in front of you.
Right.
You're, what do you think, you're a biker, shouldn't they be sharing the same lane? At least my, my experience at the Black Diamond Trail is dangerous.
It's safer if they're not sharing the same road, but they're not gonna do it.
Yeah, so, so ultimately, you know, I agree with you, Lynn, that sidewalks are for pedestrians, people should not be riding the vehicle on a sidewalk, but if you're talking about trail, that's different, and the suggestions in what I read was, if it's just two-way bicycle traffic, that's 10 feet, five feet for each direction, and if you add pedestrian along with that, now you're talking like 15 feet to be able to have pedestrians and bicycles. I just think that it's incumbent upon us to be thinking that, again, this is a road out here, this is not a street, it's a road, it's not 30 miles an hour, it's not, you know, it's 45 mile an hour speed limit with 45 plus mile an hour traffic on it, which is not a place for bicycles, and it's definitely not a place for pedestrians, so we just need to be thinking ahead as we're planning, how are we gonna manage pedestrians, how are we gonna manage some kind of a trail that allows people to bicycle without being in the roadway?
Because I get right past this to the west, and there ain't no place, there's no real estate there's either, so.
And I'm with you as far as bikes, you know, if you're on a sidewalk with a bike, you should be walking it, it's a vehicle, it should not be ridden on a sidewalk.
And we got, we got off track a little bit, CJ, back to the, back to the contract with the, potential contract with the developer, at this point in time, it's still awaiting the approval from the developer saying it's a go?
That's correct, they largely agree to the scope and terms, but I've asked for some kind of note from the corporate officer agreeing to reimburse the town for the cost, just to make sure we're.
So they don't say, we didn't agree, we're not gonna agree with you?
Yeah, well, I mean, applicants can, of course, speak on behalf of corporate owner, but, you know, with something like this, it's a considerable expense, we just want to make sure that the corporate officers are aware that their agents or, you know, other signees are essentially making decisions on their behalf, you know, that are, you know, consequential and not inexpensive, right? Exactly, so, we're just obviously mindful of, you know, the way we coordinate that, so.
Well, it seems to me, if they don't disagree, then the whole thing is a nonstarter, or if they don't agree, the whole thing is a nonstarter.
I would just like to say also, as lead agency and environmental review, you all can get even a further opinion, should you wish to, so, if you, for some reason, didn't concur with the conclusions or wanted additional advice on top of it, you could seek additional and further advice, and you can lean on the advice upon which you wish to. So, you know, if you have concerns about this, please, you know, tell me, you know, tell Al, Sandy, and, you know, we'll do our best to address them, you know, up to and including retaining a different firm if it's that concerning. I have to say, you know, SRF has my full confidence, and they come highly recommended by the town's engineers, and we've had a, I, I just want to emphasize again, the relationship that we've had with these transportation engineering firm predates this application by some time, you know, by a manner of years, so, I just really want to emphasize.
So you are confident that they have the expertise to provide a thorough, accurate, reliable report, right?
There is, there is, goes it gets in our area.
I'm okay with, with relying on the planning department.
Absolutely, but there's, there's one more thing, though, we're talking about this particular development. They resisted the idea of putting a sidewalk along 34B and 34. We want a sidewalk along 34B and 34.
Absolutely.
We get, we need to get that sidewalk, we need to have it separated appropriately from their parking and travel area.
I think they, I think that was the conclusion.
It's, it's not incumbent on them to design a pathway or a bike way for the town of Lansing to get bicycles from A to B, and no matter how we feel about it, the state feels that bicycles belong on the right-hand side of the highway, and is perfectly okay with them. I agree with everybody here that this should be, this should not be a 45 mile an hour speed limit down through here, but if we can get this developer to put in the sidewalks that we want along 34 and along 34B, everything else, you know, we can't expect them to come up with a plan that we haven't come up with ourselves yet.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, but, but yes, I think the developer understands we want sidewalks on both sides, and, and it should be separated from the parking area.
Tom, you have it?
Well, I'm just wondering what the timeframe is for all of this.
That's a good question, it's gonna take some time for them to collect data, I know they'd like to get it done as soon as they can, but I've, I've asked for a note from their corporate counsel, "I close the business tomorrow," just to confirm essentially the scope and the cost, so, I imagine once they get, and, you know, that actually reminds me, if you'd like, I can ask David Cruzy of SRF if he would be willing to attend the next planning board meeting, just to, you know, speak more about it, speak about some of the past work done for the town, so, doesn't really address your timeline issue, but it just kind of occurred to me that that could be beneficial.
Dean, couldn't, well, you would have this person come to the next meeting that we have, and is Dandy Mark gonna be there, too?
That's a good question, I assume that they may, they may come to the meeting if they have additional plan review to do with you all.
I mean, it seems like the public would want to hear from SRF, too.
Oh, yeah, of course, I mean, yeah, the public is always welcome.
Yeah, I don't know if he would give a, I don't know if he would give a verbal, you know, what he's thinking at that meeting, I think it's more of, of finding out what the planning board would like to see as part of the report, what, what, what do we want in the touch?
We need to give the company a clear written scope.
Right.
We don't want to talk to them about it, we want them to see it on a piece of paper.
We have, yeah, we absolutely have a scope based on your requests at prior meetings, as well as the DOT's requested scope, remember, again, they have that kind of template that they like to see and what they want to see in a report, and so we have a work scope outline, what I'm thinking is, you know, David could essentially walk you through what that work scope is and, and what that means.
And I think it would also be appropriate for that to happen at a, at a public meeting here, so that the public can see that the relationship is between the town and the professional, and not between the developer and the professional.
And what that scope is.
Of course.
CJ?
Yeah.
So the report would go to the DOT as well?
Yeah, of course, and DOT actually has been really helpful, and, and SRF has been helpful in coordinating with DOT as well, and just making sure that one, you know, understands the scope, understands the data, it's actually, they've been a huge help in that regard, helping us coordinate with DOT, so, yeah, DOT would consider that as part of their review for the highway work permit.
Just to turn up a stone, DOT has been talking to you guys, and as far as this progression of this development, that's been totally transparent between DOT and the town.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, I mean, I think, you know.
Because we heard that some things happened, something had, and it's, that, that maybe the Dandy Mark had taken this further as to what the DOT was thinking than actually what it was.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, I'm not sure.
We need to disc.
Sure.
Yeah, we asked for things in writing from the DOT, because there were comments made that, that the developer, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, there were comments made that were not necessarily, we, we don't know the accuracy of either one of them, so we said, I said to John, we, the board would like to see something in writing from the DOT in regards to their approval process of this potential development.
And, yeah, I think they provided comments to applicant, and so, I'll make sure that you get a copy of those, if you have them.
Yeah, we are, we are different.
Right, and some of the residents had indicated their conversation with DOT was different from the applicant's.
Yeah, I'm sure that it's, yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure they were, because depending on who you, who answers the phone when you call the DOT office, you're gonna get the quickest answer they can give you, whether it's right or wrong.
That's why I said, I said, we want things in writing, so we can present that to the public, this is what the DOT has said, right?
Yeah, absolutely, and we have a thread of communication showing that back and forth, and there's, you know, it's, it's open to anybody, I mean, I'm 100% willing to stand behind any of that, so.
So, I'm assuming that in our scope, again, to reiterate what Deb has asked for and what Bob is concerned with, for the traffic study, that they very specifically tell us their opinions on drive-through and how much traffic is based on the plan that they've given us, of what kind of impact that's gonna have in terms of backing up traffic.
Right, so there, I just want to clarify, there's kind of two different elements to this, so, one of them is kind of these external pieces, and then the trip generation itself from the use, right, so the traffic impact itself, but then within that, I believe some time ago, we asked applicant for kind of a sweat path of circulation through the site, right? Okay, so, circulation access parking will all be internal to the site, and the engineers for the project and project applicants are essentially going to have to coordinate that and design the project, you know, to support that and the findings of the traffic impact study, if that makes sense, like stacking and things like, like your questions about the drive-through.
Yeah, and I think that we potentially need more information from Dandy, this, they're saying, you know, this is our first drive-through, so this is their first rodeo on a drive-through, and, you know, if you've been to different drive-throughs for Duncan here, over in Trident, or you've been up to Tripphammer to Smack Donald's, and you see how they do their drive-through, and if you've been other places where you, you order, and then you potentially go pay, and then maybe you go off to the side to park, and so, their plan, I think some of this is gonna be dependent upon the specific plan that Dandy has to provide, and how they're gonna manage that.
I think, you know, I don't remember seeing where they were gonna stack the cars, if there is, I don't remember seeing.
I didn't see anything of that.
We have to do that plan, and the other thing I was thinking, we didn't talk about, is, is snow, stacking snow in the wintertime, is there space on the site to them to build the snow up?
Back, back towards.
I don't know, I don't remember the plan, you know.
The septic area, or what?
But we have to ask that, did they consider that, and, you know, Larry, you got something?
Yeah, could this be an opportunity for us also to address the opinion that three out of four of our clients here seem to have that this is gonna be a destination, that's gonna automatically generate more traffic? That, that would seem to me that that would be something that a properly done traffic study would do.
Yeah, and I think maybe Larry's referring to kind of a pass-by, you know, catchment versus, you know, kind of the induced demand that's being suggested by, you know, the versus, you know, kind of the induced demand that's being suggested by, you know, essentially the building of this. So the question is how many kind of dedicated trips versus kind of this pass-by capture, I think is what Larry's alluding to.
Yeah, y'all have heard the comments. They're convinced that just because they sell diesel fuel, trucks are going to converge from all over the state down here. The traffic study should show that that is, the only trucks that are going to be here are the ones that are here now. It's not going to be a destination.
I heard there's two signs going, one in Weetsburg and one in Waterloo, that the best destination is down here.
Well, the destination would be those locally, I'm saying vocally, that are employed around here that might go there for lunch.
That's the whole idea. That's a great idea, but they'd be local people.
Right, coming from downtown Ithaca to Lansing.
Yeah, that's it. That's the impression that these people have been given somehow by the people that have primed them, that this is going to draw people from all over the state simply because it's there. It's not a flying J or a pilot, for God's sake.
Are you talking about residents or Apple?
The residents.
The residents, I'm suggesting.
Residents, yeah, keep talking about this can be such a magnet to bring all this additional traffic.
It's not shit for what.
Exactly.
Can I ask, at the risk of kind of getting too far into, you know, say, discussion of something not on the agenda, I'm hearing the concern about the drive-through. My understanding was the applicant was responding to the planning board interest in the drive-through. Is that no longer the case?
No, they said that they think they might want to put a drive-through there. So immediately when they say that, it becomes a concern of ours because of what, you know, what's happening up the street.
Okay, and I'm not sure if the applicant thought maybe that that was a preferred amenity?
No, no, it was something they came up with all on their own.
They said that was part of their business model.
Yeah, we tried to get rid of it.
Yes, that was one of the reasons why.
I didn't think it was allowed to be one.
So hold on a second, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I remember it being a topic of discussion.
So hold on a second, if it's part of their business model, then how is it their first one?
No, they said that this would be, this would be the first time they've done one. They really, really want to do it.
They really have to do it.
They said COVID made them realize the drive-through, the future.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Fair enough.
Right, they brought that up very early on.
I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why the building is situated the way it is on the lot because of the drive-through.
Potential.
The danger, the danger of the public parking on the other side and crossing in front of the drive-through was a safety issue. So to solve that safety issue, that's how the building got oriented the way it is.
Got it, okay.
You know, just one quick thing, it isn't, it isn't that much different than Morabato on the corner. In other words, if a truck comes out of the gas station, the existing one, they're taking a left onto a busy road, Trip Hammer Road, then they go to the light and then they usually take a left. Usually they're heading, you know, to Cortland or whatever. In this situation, it's the same, it's similar that they're, they're going to be taking a left out of the lot onto a busy road, they're going to the light, but in this situation, they're going to be taking a right going towards Cortland. So it is very similar to what exactly what we have right now.
Yeah, except that I think down, down at the proposed Dandy Mart location, you're less likely to see what I have seen up at Morabato, tractor trailers lined up along Perruville Road so that the guys can go in and get a sandwich or a cup of coffee. Down there, there's more room for them to get off the road. And to me, that's a bigger hazard than having a couple of trucks or a couple extra trucks sitting in the parking lot down there. Because this parking lot up here isn't anywhere as near as large as the one that.
That they're proposing.
That they're proposing.
Yeah.
And I think that that hazard would be removed by that fact.
Of course, and no parking signs.
I think that that North Spur in front of Morabato, North Approval Road on Trip Hammer is, doesn't get the same backup of traffic that you will have by Rokes Harbor going north on 34.
Right, right.
I think that's, that's the bigger issue there is you have a long, long line of cars and you have somebody taking a left out of there.
During a certain period of time at 5 o'clock, from 4:30 to 6:00, there is more traffic, more traffic backed up there. But at the same time in the morning, there is traffic backed up at that light coming from Auburn area on that road that's backed up at that light waiting to get through with the truck trying to get out there. So it's up to the engineers, the traffic engineers to let us know where the concerns should be.
15 years ago, that intersection up there was a 16,000 car day intersection.
And it's dropped. It was on that transportation committee, right?
Yep.
Yep. A necessary for the Northeast Transit.
All right, I think we kind of got a little, a little too much from it. Okay, so anything else then, folks, tonight that we, anything else you want to talk about?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so I guess a motion to adjourn. Deb, second. Larry, favor.
All right.